Well, welcome everyone. I see lots of familiar faces. I see actually previous humanities governors, wardies on here. I'm delighted to see those. Elizabeth, I see your face there. I see current board members, former board members, Montana Public Radio faces as well. That's great. We don't often see your faces for radio folks, but that's great. Previous Executive Director Scott, great to see you. My name is Aaron Pruitt and I serve as the Chair of Humanities Montana. And just a delight to have all of you join us. And I know you're all looking forward to hearing from our new Executive Director Randy Tenglin, which will come to her in just a couple of moments, but I have a few housekeeping things for us to do first. I'll pause momentarily. Is everyone able to hear me? Technically, is everything working for folks? No, it's good. Sam's giving me the thumbs up. All right, I'm in good shape there then. That's great. Thank you. So with that, a few housekeeping items. Today's Town Hall will be recorded to share with those who could not attend. If you wish, you may opt out of sharing your video by clicking on the camera icon that's in the lower left portion of your screen. I'm sure all of you are becoming more familiar with these video conference platforms and Zoom, but for some of us, it might still be new. So do look for that video portion or the video icon in the lower left part of your screen. We will be hearing from our new Executive Director Randy and also from our special guest from the Wild Rose Center, April Martin during this meeting. During the last 15 minutes of today's presentation, we'll be opening up for a Q and A session to the audience using the chat box. And if you have not yet opened the chat box, it is on the right-hand side of your screen and there's a button down at the bottom where you can open up the chat box. And you can see there's already some chat information going on there. So you can access your chat box there and you can type into that box at any point during the meeting. So again, my name is Aaron Pruitt. I serve as the Director and General Manager of Montana PBS and I'm based at the Bozeman Station for Montana PBS. I'm a native Montanan, grew up here in the Gallatin Valley. And before I came to the Humanities Montana Board, I perhaps like some of you was a recipient of NEH Humanities Montana Grants for Film and Television Projects. And that's really how I became introduced to Humanities Montana. It's been a certain privilege to serve as the Chair here for Humanities Montana in my eighth year as a Governor's Appointee to this Board. And I've really enjoyed my time with this Board, especially as the mission of Humanities Montana really aligns so well with the storytelling and conversation mission of Montana PBS itself. And in fact, speaking of our mission, Humanities Montana, our mission is to serve communities through stories and conversation. We offer experiences that nurture imagination and ideas by speaking the Montana's diverse, Montanans diverse history, literature and philosophy. That's a mission statement that we as a Board have worked hard on. In fact, some of you on this, on this call have helped craft that mission statement. It's on our website and it's something that we're very proud of. Also, I'd like to take a moment to, for a land acknowledgement here as well. Humanities Montana acknowledges that we are in the homelands of indigenous people. We offer our respect for their history, culture, and for the path they have always shown us in caring for this place for generations to come. So with that, I'd like to move to an introduction to Randy, who truly, that's the person you all wanted to hear from today, not necessarily me, but it's a little bit of background. Randy was born in Sydney, Montana and received degrees from Rocky Mountain College and the University of Montana, where she wrote a master's thesis on Montana women writers. She taught English at Billings West High School and received a fellowship grant from Humanities Montana, previously named Montana Community Committee for the Humanities in 2002 to research the cultural literary and historical significance of Montana's women's community. She used that grant to travel the state, visiting local museums and archives and giving presentations at libraries and to civic organizations. Again, another person that's had a grant recipient has a history with us as a recipient. Randy earned her PhD in English from the University of Arizona and has taught at Austin College since 2000. On US women and minority writers in her co-edited volume with Brady Harrison of the University of Montana, teaching Western American literature, has appeared on the University of Nebraska, Nebraska Press this June. Randy Wrigley speaks on academic conference panels about public humanities engagement and publishes opinion articles on literature, culture, and the Texas. 2020 has been a really quite a transition year for Humanities Montana. It was, we welcome a new Executive Director. We never would have imagined that we would be doing that in the midst of a pandemic. And yet Randy has stepped into this role just as of June 1 officially, has done so naturally and with grace. And we thank her for that. We are delighted to have Randy back in Montana and sharing her leadership and vision for Humanities Montana with that. So with that, I'd like to turn things over to Randy and it's all yours.
Thank you, Erin, so much for that kind introduction and for all that you do for Humanities Montana and for your wonderful leadership on our Board. I've been looking forward to this opportunity to connect virtually at least with the Humanities Montana community throughout the state. So we can have this important conversation about the importance of the humanities in the time of COVID-19 and Humanities Montana's response to the pandemic. I'm speaking to you today. I'm zooming in from the Humanities Montana Office here in Missoula on the campus of the University of Montana. And before we get started today, I want to ask a question that we'll circle back to throughout our times together today. And if you want, you can write a response to this question in the chat. The question is, how do the humanities matter to you right now? I invite you to respond in the chat throughout our time together today. We hope to come back to the, to this question during our Q and A session. And I just invite you to reflect on that during our conversation. The mission of Humanities Montana is to bring the humanities to our Montana communities through stories and conversations. So to that end, I'll tell you a little bit about my story and how it intersects with the stories and the values of Humanities Montana. And as Erin mentioned, I was born and I spent the first 10 years of my life in Sydney. Now, you have my permission to take out your phones and Google that if you're not exactly sure where Sydney is on the Montana state map. My grandfather and his brother had a lumberyard there and my father started his career as a newspaper reporter and journalist there in Richland County. And I have two younger sisters and a younger brother. And it turns out we are a family of writers and storytellers. We get it from my mom's family too. They're also from Eastern Montana, but a few counties over there on the high lines, high line. She's the daughter of Russian Mennonite granddaughter of Russian Mennonite homesteaders in the western community. All of the great Montana Western writers theorize and maybe romanticize a little bit the relationship between identity and landscape. But I still like to think that the dramatic, dramatic and stunning landscapes of my childhood, the engulfing prairies and the wide open skies somehow shaped my imagination and my side. But I think what really formed me as a person was growing up in small Montana communities. Over the years, my family also lived in Red Lodge in Carving County and Park City in Stillwater County. And my three siblings and I were the beneficiaries of an extended network of family, teachers, church and 4-H leaders who modeled the values of community and caring for the next generation. But growing up in Eastern Montana and in small towns also raised a lot of questions for me, especially as a girl. Although I was loved and affirmed in my communities, I didn't see myself, I didn't see women in formal positions of leadership and influence. I mean, even as a kid, I knew that the women were really in charge, but there was a disconnect there. So these questions were kind of forming in my mind and bubbling up inside me when I attended Rocky Mountain College in Billings. And that's where I really discovered my passion for writing and education and, and the humanities. And the liberal arts seminars I took at Rocky allowed me to begin thinking critically about those questions of place and gender, about race and my Montana identity. What did it mean that in high school, we only learned about the great men of Montana history? Or what did it mean that my Mennonite ancestors, a displaced and persecuted people in Europe immigrated to Montana to farm on the lands of displaced indigenous peoples? And of course, these questions raised other questions, larger questions about whose stories are told and celebrated and whose stories are forgotten and marginalized in American literary history and why? And so these were questions I pursued as a graduate student at the University of Arizona and also as a PhD student at the, as a master's student at the University of Montana and a PhD student at the University of Arizona. And I took literature and history and women's studies courses to interrogate the stories that we privilege of white settlers and of men, stories that have been privileged in how we talk about the West. Nigerian author Chimamanda Adichie calls this the danger of a single story. She says that representation matters and whose story gets told and whose stories we're exposed to and whose story doesn't get told, that can have real world implications in terms of issues of diversity and inclusion. And along those same lines, native writer and scholar Elizabeth Cook-Lynn writes that art and literature and storytelling are at the epicenter of all that a nation or an individual intends to be. And I think that's why the humanities matter in a democracy and in a society that values justice and equality. Now, I've just spent the past 12 years as an English professor at Austin College in Texas. And I taught the literary history of the United States to my students. And many of my students were studying to become K-12 English and Language Arts teachers. And I attempted to model to them in my classes, an integrated literary canon that included traditional voices, but also the voices of women and African-American and American Indian writers. So my students and in turn their future students were to be exposed to the diversity of voices and perspectives about what it means and has meant to be an American. So even though I didn't realize it at the time, growing up in rural Montana communities planted these deep and enduring questions that I've been able to explore through various educational and professional experiences with the humanities. So returning to Montana to continue public humanities work with, with Humanities Montana has been a natural convergence of my values as a person and a scholar, the values of community diversity and untold stories, the values of the heart of Humanities Montana's mission. So now that I've told you a little bit about myself, I'd love to hear about our audience. We'll take a few moments here in the chat box. Maybe people, people have been doing this already. Just tell us where you're from and write your answers in the chat box. And maybe we'll do a few shout outs here. We get some activity in the chat box. Here we have Great Falls, Hamilton, O'Conrad, Bozeman. Oh, now, now they're coming in. Miles C. Shoto. Oh, Sydney, yay. Born in Sydney. Wonderful. Florence Helena, it's great to have everyone from all over the state. Oh, we have someone here from the North Carolina Humanities Council. Welcome. Oh, and it looks like my friend Catherine has tuned in from Tucson. It's great to see everyone here today. And thank you for, for your responses. And I remind you, let's to come back to that question. How do the humanities matter to you right now? And that's something I've been thinking about a lot because of course I didn't expect to move back and arrive in my beloved home state to work on behalf of the humanities in, in the middle of a pandemic. But this experience has made me realize anew the value of the humanities in a time of crisis. And I think that my own experience of moving across the country and leaving Texas where I'd lived for 12 years and not being able to say goodbye to people, not being able to say goodbye to my students and my friends and my, my colleagues there, of course, we said virtual goodbyes, but I wasn't able to see people before I left. And I think that, that that experience has made me think about the pandemic and the role of the humanities as we face loss and grieve it during this time of the pandemic. And I, and I don't mean the tragic loss of life, the loss of livelihoods and facing our own mortality. I'm talking about the loss of the world as we knew it, the loss of the world we lived in before, our, our ways of being together. Our, that's all changed because of the pandemic. I know, I think of the day, March 9. That was the day I woke up and realized, oh, everything's going to change. It was the beginning of my spring break as a faculty member. And that's when I started to face the reality, we might not be going back into the classroom. And I've talked to other people who have that, those similar moments with the pandemic. So there's that time before, and then there's the world after. And even when things are back to normal, they will be different. And furthermore, the weddings and graduations and family reunions, the county fairs are, are opportunities to gather the ways that we've traditionally made meaning together. They have also been lost. So this is a time of loss. And I agree with the cultural commentators who say that what we are experiencing, experiencing together during the pandemic, along with everything else, is also a massive cultural loss. And in order to achieve some type of homeostasis, again, that loss needs to be grieved. And everyone's probably heard of the five stages of grief, you know, with anger, bargaining, acceptance and so on. And the most recent research has complicated that model a little bit and expanded it to add a sixth stage of grief, making meaning. Making meaning, that's what the humanities help us do through ideas, stories, conversation and community. And the humanities help us make sense of this world that we've lost and can also help us imagine the new world we'll create together and our place within it. And that of course brings about the paradox and the questioning and the ambiguity that that humanities are able to help us navigate. And although the pandemic will go away eventually, hopefully soon, that meaning-making piece, that humanities component is not going away anytime soon. And, and to me, that's how the humanities matter and how they can make a difference during, during the pandemic. So again, I see the responses popping up in chat. Thank you for your comments on how the humanities matter to you right now. And I encourage you as you are kind of having your own ideas to respond in that chat box. And we will come back to, to some of those responses during our Q and A. Um, those are some of my more, I guess, maybe abstract reflections on how the humanities matter in the time of COVID. But I'd like to follow up now with some concrete examples of what we are doing at Humanities Montana in response to the pandemic. So as many of you know, Humanities Montana delivers access to grants and quality humanities programs to communities across the state. And that has not changed. That has not changed in our transition with leadership. And that hasn't changed in terms of COVID restrictions. However, the format and how we deliver some of our programs has changed. So in fulfilling our mission and vision, since mid-March, over the past several months, we've defined three priorities to define, that have been defining our work. And so the first priority is to continue to ensure accessibility to the public humanities and high-quality public humanities programming. Our second priority has been to identify and respond to the needs of Montana's cultural organizations during the pandemic. And our third priority has been partnering with the National Endowment for the Humanities to support Montana's cultural infrastructure in a time of crisis. And I'll briefly touch on all three of those priorities. Early in the pandemic, in terms of thinking about accessibility to the public humanities, early in the pandemic, when shelter-in-place guidelines were introduced, there was a survey that found that over 60% of Americans reported feeling socially isolated. And this was in the early weeks of the pandemic. And we were concerned because in a state like Montana, where many communities and many individuals are already geographically isolated, that that sense of social isolation would compound, would be compounded by geographic isolation. So to address that at least partially, our programming team led by Samantha Dwyer has generated over two dozen high-quality virtual humanities programs. And so these programs were conducted by our speakers who gave, who provided conversations and lectures on a variety of topics from the environmental humanities, women's history, poetry, online journalism. And these were conducted as Friday afternoon happy hour. So Montanans were able to zoom in from all parts of the state and have these conversations together. And they're now archived on our website, humanitiesmontana.org, under virtual humanities. And I encourage you to take a look at some of these, these programs, the catalog of virtual programs that we have online now. And I think many of you are familiar with our DIY and digital humanities weekly newsletter. We've always had a monthly newsletter. But with the shift to COVID restrictions and stay-at-home directives, we wanted to bring the humanities into your inbox every week. And again, Samantha Dwyer is, has been coordinating the whole staff, we work on this together, to bring our personal reflections about the humanities. We have, I'm a fan of our philosophy section, which is written by our work-study student, student Sierra Cornelius, who also sent out the invitation, which is why her name is showing up on some of your, your screens. And she's a rising senior here at University of Montana and an English major. And that newsletter you'll find is, is full of discussion prompts and more virtual programs. And the purpose is really to encourage Montanans to maintain connection and with each other and with the humanities throughout the pandemic. And I see in the chat box, if you haven't signed up, the link that you can use to sign up for our DIY and digital humanities newsletter is there now. In terms of identifying and responding to the needs of Montana cultural organizations, in early April, as part of a statewide coalition, we administered a survey to assess the impact of COVID-19 on our state's cultural infrastructure. And we heard from 71 different organizations, historical societies, museums, educational groups, libraries and so on. And what we found was daunting. Over 92% of these organizations at that time had ceased programming and, and project activities. And 77% of the organizations surveyed said that the pandemic threatened to close their organization permanently. There was also a sense of determination that came out through that, that survey. Many of these Montana cultural organizations reported a desire to adapt their programming and services in response to the pandemic through virtual and online means. And we were also very heartened by the dedication of, the dedication to the humanities throughout and across this, this state. And we were, became particularly aware of the robust volunteer network present in Montana's cultural organizations. So in terms of our partnering with the National Endowment for the Humanities, in that sense, our work in some ways has really resembled what we were doing pre-pandemic. Earlier this summer, we finished a round of our regular grant cycle and we awarded over $30,000 to eight different Montana cultural organizations at that time. And I do want to take this opportunity to remind you that our next grants deadline is coming up on August 20th. And this is for our film and video grants, our regular grants for programs and projects, special programs and projects of cultural organizations and our opportunities grants. And Kim Anderson, our Director of Programs and Grants can provide you with more information. And I see that we've just posted the, the link to information about the grants in the chat box, chat box there. But our work has changed because of, because of COVID-19 in terms of granting due to the CARES Act. And that's the $2 trillion COVID aid package that was passed by Congress. Our granting work did take a shift. The National Endowment of the Humanities received $75 million from the CARES Grants Act. And a portion of that was set aside for, to, for the NEH to distribute to the state humanities councils. And so the NEH asked us, Humanities Montana, to distribute over $400,000 in CARES Grant awards. And we distributed those in grants up to $5,000 to Montana cultural organizations. And we are currently wrapping up that granting process. But to date, we've been able to provide 89 different Montana cultural organizations with grant awards that went primarily to operations, to paying the rent and keeping the lights on over the summer and to keeping staff employed. And to that end, I am so pleased that today we are joined by a CARES Grant recipient, April Martin of the Wild Rose Center in Busby on the Northern Cheyenne Nation. You'll hear more about April and the wonderful work that she does with the Wild Rose Center and our development and communications intern, Ryan McCarty. Will moderate a conversation with April. So you can learn more about her organization and how a CARES Grant benefited the organization. So April and Ryan, I'm going to turn things over to you now.
Thank you for that, Randy. And thank you for joining us today, April. To start, could you tell us a bit about the Wild Rose Center? How did you get started and what was your motivation in the creation of the Wild Rose Center?
Sure. Hi, everyone. I'm very glad to be here. The Wild Rose Center is the outgrowth of another organization that was closing its doors. I saw so much potential to expand our focus into community health and wellness and more, and just do more. So I opened the doors in 2017. Located in Busby, Montana on Cheyenne homelands, we are women belonging to many nations, committed to helping each other and our communities by educating, empowering and inspiring. We function as a retreat center as well as a community resource center. We host programs of all types and serve as a point of contact for organizations that work within our communities, both on and off the Northern Cheyenne Reservation.
Thank you for taking some time to share some of the amazing work of the Wild Rose Center. And I know that you've had a professional relationship with Humanities Montana in the past. How has your connection with Humanities Montana impacted the Wild Rose Center?
Well, I've used several of the speakers from the catalog and I love the feedback from the community. As a fun note, in 2017, our first grant as the Wild Rose Center was for work that I did bringing little free libraries to the five districts on our reservation. We were awarded the Montana Center for the Book Prize, which I promptly spent on more books for our reservation-wide book club, which we call RRES Reads. Two of my favorite stories regarding bringing books to remote locations are, the first one's on the Tongue River over at Bernie, which is the far southeastern part of our reservation. When I deliver books to the kids, the, they start circling around the little library on their bikes. And so that village has no services at all, no gas station, no, nothing. And so I make sure that I stock the library there with DIY crafts and adventure books. Cause I want the kids to transport themselves and go on big adventures, you know, just open that up for them. The other story is that Langear, the site there, again, as I was delivering books, this fellow was walking by with his grocery sacks. That's what I thought. And he saw me open the little door and he was like, ma'am, ma'am, are you looking for some good books? I just put two bags of good romance novels in there. So it just reminds me that we never know who or how we're touching people in life. So I'm continually surprised at the use and enjoyment that the little libraries bring. And I should note that there's not a library on our reservation other than at the Travel College.
Those are great examples of how important these resources are to your community. Thank you. How have daily operations changed in response to the coronavirus?
Well, I rely on gatherings of people. So my operations have been completely shut down. And I was kind of holding out hope until May and then all of my fall groups began canceling as well. So it's really disheartening to try to work in, in that type of situation. But one of my biggest disappointments was our signature event that we call Healing Week. And this is where we have a number of alternative or traditional healers come in and offer the people we serve a chance to seek help for free or as they can afford in modalities that most people in our area would never have the opportunity or funds to meet with. We've had up to 18 healers at a time offering services. Each day lunch is served to an average of 35 people. And then supper again that night to maybe a different 30. In 2019, we saw over 200 people in four days. And we offered many workshops and lectures on all sorts of topics. We've utilized a humanity speaker who uses art as therapy and it was a full house for her talk. Mental health, physical, energy, emotional wellness. We have families beginning to attend together. Talk therapy, generational trauma, orthobionomy, and not Banyal, missing and murdered indigenous women awareness. The list just goes on and on. We had a first lady, First Nations lady from our neighbor up in Canada that kind of sort of watched the program on a Facebook just for two years to see if we were like legitimate, you know, and something like that. And then she called me and said, uh, you know, she'd like to attend. And then she would, was willing to offer a class if anybody was interested. She is a native plant medicines person. And so we use choke cherries and other local plants to make items for use during the cold and flu season. That class was standing room only. Two years later, her tribe asked her to host a Healing Week in, on their reserve up in Canada. And she also had great success. And that's kind of my goal with that program. And that's kind of my goal with that program, is I, it should get out into every town. We can all use that boost, and especially in this time for mental health, and just that, some sort of community action or interaction. It's a fun and change, it's a life-changing time. Believing in food sovereignty and food that food is medicine, we partnered with an organization and taught butchering and cooking class last year to 19 people who ranged in age from 12 to the early 70s. And then they prepared a meal for the community on the final day where we had a big tent set up on the lawn and a Cheyenne drum group as entertainment. 2020 would have been the eighth year that we met in person, and this year, we're going to switch it to a virtual event. So I would encourage you, if anybody's interested, it's open to everybody, male or female. I'd invite you to join the Wild Rose Center Facebook group. That's my best way of getting out to everybody. And I'll start posting dates as we near the kickoff, which would be late August, early September.
Sounds like really important work, and it's great that you were able to shift that to a virtual platform. So why did you apply for a CARES Grant?
I was going to be one of those organizations that was going to have to shut my doors. So this was an opportunity for me to try some new things and try to stay open. I do not want my business to be a casualty of the pandemic, and I know that I make a difference in my community.
And how do you plan to use the CARES Grant?
Well, I'm going to pay some bills to keep the lights on. But one of the items that I was working on last winter was preservation of local history and Cheyenne culture. So these small extraordinary stories of ordinary people, life stories. So I'm hoping to start a podcast. I spoke with some elders and they've agreed to be interviewed and some others as well. And this is my lesson of COVID is learn something new.
And what outcome are you hoping for with this podcast?
Well, I think southeastern Montana has some pretty cool history. We have Native Americans, we have cowboys, we have ranching, we have mining, we have battles, and you know, much more. So I think the stories of life and people are important glimpses into what shapes us in our area. And we only have now about 300 fluent Cheyenne speakers. So while others are working on preserving the language, I want to try to help preserve the stories hopefully in that language. And I'm told that some of them are much more humorous than Cheyenne.
Great. I'm looking forward to listening soon. What would your summer have looked like without a CARES Grant?
Well, there aren't many opportunities for bringing arts and humanities to our area. So I'm always grateful for the programming offered via Humanities Montana. And this will help me stay productive, as I rely, as I said before, on groups and private donations for income. It would have been a very bleak summer. So I'm learning, learning some new things as we move into the future. And I'm just, you know, curious to see what happens. Thank you for having me today, and good luck, Randy. This is a great organization.
Thank you for joining us today, April. The CARES Grant from Humanities Montana sounds like it will have a large impact on your area and community. I can speak for our entire organization in saying that we're very excited to see the work coming out of the Wild Rose Center. And we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
We will now go back to Randy for a forecast of how Humanities Montana plans to implement our mission in the coming months.
April, thank you so much for being with us today. And all the comments in, in the chat are commenting on just how inspiring your work is and and inspiring to see such adaptation and the services and the, the arts and culture and humanities that, that you're bringing to your community. And Ryan, thank you so much for moderating that, that conversation. Before we move into our, our Q and A today in our discussion, I do want to take a few minutes to update you on what we're doing as, as we move forward. One of our most active and popular programs is the Speakers in the Schools program that provides free K-12 programs on civics, journalism, history, and literature to classrooms around the state. And of course, right now, there's so much uncertainty and anxiety about the reopening of schools and what classroom instruction will, will look like this, this fall. So we've been in contact with a network of educators to, across the state to gauge the role of Humanities Montana with our speakers programs. And we are working with our speakers and our presenters, presenters to pivot to virtual programs for teachers and classrooms. And we're also compiling supplementary resources, virtual resources, and online resources for teachers on teaching the pandemic, and also to supplement our resources on informed citizenship. In a few weeks, we're going to actually offer a virtual seminar, a free seminar for our speakers and presenters to provide strategies for converting their in-person programs to a virtual format for the schools. Our Montana Conversations program, and I, I think many of you are part of that program or you have attended a Montana Conversation in your community. This program facilitates community discussions with our speakers and, and scholars in libraries, state parks, museums, civic organizations, and retirement communities, and all types of public venues across the state. In the face of uncertainty with restrictions and anxiety about in-person gatherings, we are encouraging our patrons to schedule Montana Conversations in outdoor settings. And we've had some successful programs this summer in our state parks. We had a recent one held in Akosheka State Park. Or we encourage folks to schedule, if your organization is interested, to schedule a virtual Montana Conversations. And the link to our Montana Conversation Speakers catalog is there in the chat. And this afternoon, actually, I think the Wonderful Health Sterns is going to give a virtual conversation for the Belgrade Public Library. So along with continuing and adapting the work that we've already been doing, we are also in the middle of rolling out a new initiative, the Democracy Project. And the Democracy Project is a nonpartisan community organization project that encourages civic action through partnership with community organizers, local libraries and schools, and Humanities Montana. So the idea behind the Democracy Project is that local students will team up with Humanities Montana organizers and work on projects that young people have identified as vital to their communities. Our two community organizers will partner with libraries in Missoula, Sealy Lake, Billings, and Roundup to help the young people in the area to imagine themselves as civic agents and conduits of change. And of course, our original plan was to begin programming this spring. But right now, as we look towards fall, we're, we're shifting to moving forward with this program through some virtual options. Humanities Montana, as an organization, as a staff, as a board, we have been talking a lot about the issue of racial equity and racism in our society. And this has come into just a stark moment in, in our culture with the Black Lives Moments protests in response to the murder of George Floyd in Minneapolis. And those protests have really brought about a paradigm shift in national conversations around racism and racial equity in the United States. So in recent months, I, along with our board and our staff, have rededicated Humanities Montana to the pursuit of racial equity inside our organization. And in the past year, there have all, were already ongoing conversations and initiatives to start the process of addressing diversity, equity, and inclusion. Our board took part of a very intensive racial equity training, and they've been dedicating portions of their board meetings to conversations about racial equity work. So it's not just this one-off training. It's been a sustained conversation throughout our board gatherings. Our staff together has participated in the 21-day Racial Equity Habit Forming Challenge. And if you want more information on that, email us and we'll send you the link on that. And we're currently taking an extension course on, through the University of Montana called "Dismantling Racism", and to really start to think about the work that organizations can do to combat systemic and institutional racism. We do think that Humanities Montana has a role to play in the larger picture of social and racial equity in a democratic society. We can do this by raising underrepresented voices and recommitting to that and finding ways to make our organization and our resources accessible to rural and underserved communities, especially Montana's tribal communities. As we move forward, we aim to infuse this, this racial equity work into all aspects of the organization, our board membership, our granting, and our programming. As we close today, or at least as I close my portion of the comments today, I want to thank you for your unwavering support. We are able to continue our mission and operate as broadly as we do because of your generosity. Please consider a gift today as an investment in the cultural future of our shapes, of our state. And if you open the chat box, you'll see a link to our donation page. And I want to mention that the CARES Act included a provision for charitable deductions this year and that Humanities Montana is a qualifying 501(c)(3). Your donation today may qualify for the universal charitable deduction of up to $300 per individual. Thank you in advance for your dedication to accessible public humanities in our great state. We are now going to dedicate the rest of our time together to questions and conversations. So again, I direct you to the chat box where you can respond to that question. How do the humanities matter to you right now? Or ask any questions that might be on your mind. And we invited audience members to submit questions before today's virtual town hall. And Ryan, I understand that we actually have some pre-submitted questions from audience members.
Yeah, our first pre-submitted question comes from Jeanette in Helena. "We live in a large area, low-population state. What are some of the unique opportunities for the humanities right here at home?"
Thank you for that question, Jeanette. And I love that you framed it as opportunities to, to serve in a large area, low-population state. And this is something that is, is particularly on my mind. I'm from eastern Montana. I grew up in small towns. And I have spent the past 12 years living in Sherman, Texas, which again, if you, if you Google it, Austin College where I was teaching was not in Austin, the cultural center of the state. It was basically, it was close to Oklahoma. So those of us living in that community sometimes felt culturally around it as well. And so I think a lot about how can Humanities Montana use its resources and its network to make sure that we are present in all corners of, of the state. And I don't like it when people say that there's a silver lining to COVID because it's, it's a tragedy. But I think that what, I think we've learned lessons from the, the rapid shifts and the nimble responses we've had to have because of COVID. And so one thing that, that COVID has done is that it's, it's forced us or encouraged us, I guess, to become better at virtual programming, not just Humanities Montana, but many cultural organizations across the state. So those, these virtual programs through our speakers and the schools and our Montana Conversations, if they can continue virtually even after the pandemic, that would be a way to at least introduce ourselves to communities where we maybe haven't been before. And then that could, we could follow up with that with more in-person programs. Because we know that the virtual programs are nice, but they're not the same as that, those face-to-face interactions. The other opportunity that we have right now actually came through the CARES Grants. We, we became aware of dozens of organizations who weren't necessarily on, on our radar before, before COVID and receiving their grants and disseminating those funds to these organizations. We now have a broader coalition and network of Montana cultural organizations that we can connect with as we take our programs into the state. So those are just kind of my initial thoughts on, on that, Jeanette. And thank you for that question and for identifying that opportunity.
Okay, next, Mark Schraus, undoubtedly on the road somewhere, writes in, "Humanities Montana, Humanities Montana's digital and DIY humanities has been brilliant in both conception and execution. A certain Schwartz Prize, I think, and a real exemplar in the public humanities. Will you continue it? Will you change it or expand on it?"
Thank you for that question, Mark. And Mark's a former executive director of Humanities Montana, and it's great to hear from you. You know, coming from academia, I'm really used to insults disguised as questions. So I love compliments framed as questions. And we feel great about the DIY and digital humanities email. And we, we appreciate your kind words. For, you mentioned the Schwartz Prize. That comes through the Federation of State Humanities Councils for exemplary programming. And my understanding is that Humanities Montana in the past has received no, fewer than five of these awards. And that's something that we'll certainly, we'll certainly keep in mind. And we will keep doing the weekly newsletter. It's, we kind of send it out, and we don't know what people think. But every now and then, we, we receive feedback that people are really enjoying hearing the reflections from the staff and, and the virtual programming. So it's something that we'll keep doing. And we're having some plans on changing some of the content and some of the, the structure of that in the, in the coming months. So thank you. Thank you for that, that, Mark. Ryan, I think we have one more question, then maybe we'll go to the, the comments and questions in the chat. If folks have a question for me, you can put that in the comments box. And Ryan will monitor that and, and call my attention to those questions. And I also don't want us to lose sight of, of our, our organizing question today. Why or how do the humanities matter right now? In any case, Ryan, is there, there was another pre-submitted question, I think?
There is. An audience member notes, "These are challenging times. COVID-19 and demands for racial justice are perhaps the most pressing. In the face of these issues with a looming presidential election, why are the humanities of particular importance?"
Yeah, the, the difficulties of the times, COVID and racial calls for, for racial equity have certainly highlighted areas of difference and disagreement among Americans. And, and Humanities Montana, like all state humanities councils, is nonpartisan. And I think that's a good thing, because from what I've observed, what I've observed and in conversations that I have with people, all of us, all Americans, of all worldviews and political leanings, we all feel misunderstood and misrepresented and isolated from each other right now. And, you know, I, I do think the humanities can intervene in that, especially as we think about what do we want our democracy to, to look like? Because the humanities really are at the heart of a healthy and functioning democracy. And even looking back to the ancient Greeks, those humanities disciplines are what would become the humanities disciplines. We're at the heart of the art-based liberties, the education for a free citizen. And we can't lose sight of that, that perspective-taking and that opportunity for dialogue that the humanities inspire can also inspire positive civic engagement. There's a long history of, of understanding that. And of course, at Humanities Montana, I've mentioned some of the programming and some of the initiatives that we've undertaken to encourage this more productive civil, civic discourse. That's the spirit behind the Democracy Projects and also our Informed Citizen Initiative, which brings conversation and dialogue with panels representing Montanans, with, Montanans, with, you know, a wide range of perspectives on pressing social and political issues into the communities. I, I do have a, a personal thought on this. Because, you know, we all can, we all have a stake in this. And I think a lot, when, when these questions come up, I think a lot of the work of the sociologist Arlie Haushild, who wrote a book several years ago called "Strangers in Their Own Land", and this was a case study of Tea Party voters in rural Louisiana parishes. And she has a concept from that book called the empathy wall. So that, Arlie Haushild's theory is that this empathy wall divides Americans and keeps us from approaching each other. And so when I read that, I felt very convicted. And I started thinking every day, okay, what am I doing today to climb that empathy wall? And what did I do today to push myself back down it? So I think that those conversations and the, the dialogue that we have in the, in the humanities can help us bridge that empathy wall. And I also know, from living in small towns my entire life, basically, that we have to get along with each other. We do not have to model the toxic and vitriolic discourse that we see on the, the national level that we can begin with our sphere of influence to show that there's a different way to interact with each other and to be with, with each other. And so I think about that too, my own sphere of influence and the impact that I can have by trying to climb the empathy wall. Ryan, are there any comments from the chat that you'd like to call to our, to, to our attention? Or that responses to the, to the question of how the humanities matter? Or that responses to the question of how the humanities matter, perhaps?
There are. Cynthia Gaffney wrote in that the humanities are an eternal source of resilience. Thoughtful post. And we have a question from Mark Marzalek. Says, "What can you do in current times to foster and promote civil conversations?"
Yeah, I think that's a great question. And it's, I think, it's a question everyone's grappling with. But again, I come back to thinking of how I can model, how I can model that in my sphere of influence. And spending so many years in the classroom, too, I found that you can talk and you can write, but people really watch what you do. They watch your actions. And so I'm trying, I try to be aware of that. And I think that we're all out there acting as individuals, and we feel lost and that what in our efforts aren't making a difference. But I think collectively, they will start to make a difference. And I think that's sort of where I'm at right now when I think about what we can do to promote civil discourse. Other comments, Ryan?
Yeah, Catherine Ortiz writes in, "The humanities matter to me right now because I teach writing to a diverse population at a community college located near the Mexico-US border. I introduce first-year, first-generation students to the humanities."
Yeah, thank you for that work, Catherine. And that's important work, the work that educators are doing right now. And certainly, the humanities are part of that freeing and liberating education that promotes that critical thinking and perspective-taking that we need, especially right now.
I think related to that, Caroline Patterson writes in, "The humanities offer a window into the past and a light that illuminates the future."
I love that. Said just like a poet.
And then lastly, we have from Bess Lovick. "I need to hear and understand other stories to help me understand my own."
Yeah, that's that perspective-taking, that, or that multi-perspective-taking that the humanities offer us, and that the power of story, our own stories and others. Brian, do we have other questions or other comments from the chat?
Excuse me, I was unmuted. We have one more from Mark Moss that asks, "How is Humanities Montana implementing the goals of the Rish work that you are doing to raise the voices of underrepresented populations?"
That's such a great, a great question, Mark. And I'm so glad that you, I'm so glad that you asked that. That is going to be an ongoing process. And we think, we're thinking especially about the work that we do through our speakers and the schools and the Montana Conversations. When, you know, I come back to that question, whose story gets told and why? So we'll be working on those efforts within those programs. And we especially, we need partners in the community and from around the state, partnering organizations, maybe like you, Mark, who can help us in that effort to elevate and to privilege diverse stories and diverse voices. Ryan, do we have one last comment or question before we wrap up today?
Yeah, we can end on Molly Stockdale says, "I feel that overemphasis on testing in schools is supplanting the opportunity for young people to engage in the humanities, to talk about things that touch their hearts, and rather than focusing on grades." That might speak to our organization.
Yeah, and that's what we really try to do with our speakers in the schools program is to bring in a supplement to, we know that teachers are under a lot of pressure to stick to a curriculum and to conform to the demands of testing. And we hope that our speakers can bring in a different perspective and supplement the curriculum to promote that perspective-taking and critical thinking. That's a great comment. It looks like we are coming up against our time limit. And I've really enjoyed reading your comments, hearing your questions, and having this conversation. I really look forward to the day when I can have those conversations, when we can have these conversations face-to-face and in person. So I want to thank all of you for joining us here today. If you have further thoughts, and if you have further questions, if you go home tonight and you start thinking about how the humanities matter to you right now, I hope you will let me know. Please contact me at my email at humanitiesmontana, Thank you so much.